Cool. Thank you. Can I share my screen now? Yeah. Um. Okay, let me.
Uh, which one is, is it just the one what you got now, yeah? Which one do you wanna be host? The one with your picture or the one without the picture?
The one without the picture.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, thank you very much. Hello guys. Hello, hello, hello. Can I hear everyone's voice here, please? Just wanted to see that um everyone is here.
Yeah, we're right here, we're right here.
Hello.
Hello, hello, hello. Good. I can't. Oh, yeah. Hello, everyone. Hello. Let me hear your voice. Come on. It seems like you.
Hello.
Hello, hello, hello. How are we all doing?
Good. Absolutely good.
Great, great, great. So today we are going to just make it as small calculations than um a brief one as well. So we just do this. This is not um not going to preach. I'm not going to preach. It's a group uh group work or teamwork, okay? So we are going to pass a lot and just go with it. Alright, guys?
Yeah, yeah.
Good, good. Um first and foremost, thank you very much for uh coming to the um training. Disclaimer, please. I'm not a forest uh educator. I'm not. I'm like you. I'm like everyone here. We are all learning, okay? So if you have any um help, you just bring it, then we all learn from each other. Is that alright, please? Is that okay? I wonder.
That's amazing. Thank you.
Yeah.
Good, good. So um let's move on to the next stop. We are going to do risk management. It contains a little bit of calculations, yeah? I've, I know that a lot of us know um risk management and a lot of us do have heard about risk management, but we don't really know what risk management is. First and foremost, what we should know is about this, the lot sizes. Um let me get this up here in blue. Everyone can see my screen, please?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, you can.
Good. Okay, so first and foremost, we know the lot sizes, yeah? Lot size. Good. Now, I want everyone to help me with this. We are going to do this lot size. Okay. Let me change this one to black. This one bit bigger. Yeah, good. Good. So we all know that zero point zero one is what?
Ten cents.
Ten cent. Thank you. Or ten pence, okay? Which is zero point ten. Be careful of the fact, okay? So zero point zero two will be what? Another one, please?
Twenty pence.
Twenty pence.
Um twenty pounds, twenty bit, okay? Zero point zero two will be twenty pence. Um pence, sorry, okay? Am I getting it? So if you say zero point zero eight.
Five.
Eighty pence.
Eighty pence, good. Um can everyone mute yourself if you're not contributing, please? Thank you. So when we say zero point one, how much is that one?
One pound.
A pound, good. A pound or a dollar, depending where you are, okay? So zero point seven will be what?
Seven pound.
Seven pound, great. Now, let's go to one. How much would one be?
Ten, ten pounds.
Ten pounds. Good. Good. That's ten pounds, great. So six pounds, um six pounds will be how many lots?
Six. Oh, hang on. Did you say six pounds or six?
Yeah, six pounds will be how many lots?
Zero point six.
Zero point six. Hmm, okay. Anyone have idea? Any idea? Any other answer?
No, that's what I was gonna move.
Not same.
Six pounds will be how much in the lot size?
Zero point six.
Zero point six. Now you're talking. Cool, cool, cool. So are we getting this? Please, are we getting, is someone lost in the job? If you are lost in the job, let me know, so I can just show you some, something else. Are we all here, please? Are we on the same page?
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Good, good. So if we say the lot size will be ten. If the lot size is ten, then how much would that be? Remember, if one lot is ten pounds, then ten will be how much?
Hundred dollars.
Hundred dollars.
Right. Hundred dollars or pounds, any, any of it. Great. Are we cool with this?
Yeah, yeah.
Good, good. Now, let's move to a bit of calculation. I bet many of us have used these lot sizes, not knowing that they were too much to be used on their balance. Am I right? Me, I've done that before? I've done that before several times. Have anyone done that before?
Yes.
Great. You never knew that, oh, let me just put one lot, maybe I'll win more, not knowing that you are putting ten pounds, meaning that every pip, every pip that goes up or down, each pip of it, each one of it, ten pounds. Are you getting to me?
Yes, yes.
Good. So let's, let's move on with this. So let's say if I am opening account and I have the balance. Let's be realistic here. How much do we normally start with a life account? How much do you want me to put?
Six hundred.
Six hundred, cool. Cool. So I, I have account, life account of six hundred, and how much do we normally want to risk? Risk percent, how much? How many percent? One?
Percent.
One percent. Oh, cool. Sometimes we, we normally, um let's use shift. Shift will say two percent, right? Am I right or wrong?
Yeah.
Good. So let's, let's say, let's use two percent for our risk, okay? So meaning two percent of six hundred, how much would that be? This is slide. So let's make it easy. We are just going to make it easy for everyone to understand. So it's two divided by hundred.
By twelve.
So two divided by hundred, how much would that be? I want everyone to understand it. Two divided.
Zero point zero.
Two. Okay? So two divided by hundred is zero point zero two. After that, you times that zero point zero two times your balance, which is six hundred. So times zero point zero two. How much would that be?
Twelve.
Twelve.
Twelve. Thank you. Thank you very much. So let me ask you this question. If it's saying that we should risk twelve pounds every day or twelve pounds per trade, does it mean that we should put twelve pounds on the um lot size or not?
No.
No. Good, good, good answer. So right now, what we need to do is calculate how much lot size can we actually use. You see how risk management leads to how lot size you can use. So let's do this. Um when we look back to shifts, shift up gives us every day, there's top loss as fifty pence. Am I right or wrong, please?
Yeah.
Good. If it's fifty pence, then that means if we divide twelve by fifty, if we divide twelve by fifty, that is what we are risking today, yeah? What we are risking per trade is twelve pounds. So if twelve pounds divided by our fifty pence, which is our stop loss in case it hit our stop loss, that will give us zero point twenty five. Am I right or wrong? Um twenty four. Am I right or wrong?
You're right.
I'm right. Good. That means that is how much in um pounds? How much in pounds would that be? That's twenty four pence. Are you getting me?
That'll be twenty four dollars.
No, that is twenty four pence. Zero point twenty four will be twenty four, twenty four cents.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. Got it.
Are, are we getting it?
Yeah.
Is it clear, please? Is it clear to everyone? If it's clear, let me hear, yes. Is it clear to everyone?
No.
No.
On your, on your earlier example, because you said zero point one in a pound.
Uh huh.
So if you are saying zero point two four,
Mm-hmm.
would that not be twenty four pounds?
Great. I love how the question came in. Remember that we are not talking about the lot right now. We are talking about money right now.
Hmm.
You get me?
Yeah.
Let's start from the beginning. We are talking about our balance, which is six hundred. Six hundred dollars or six hundred pounds, and we are risking two percent of it, which will give us twelve pounds.
Yeah.
Okay? Let me put a pound here or a pound or a a pound or maybe a dollar, any, any of it, okay? That'll give us twelve pounds. That means in every trade that we take, we are risking only twelve pounds. Are you getting me?
Yeah.
Good. And we know that shift give us uh um this stop loss, which is fifty pence. In case the trade didn't go our way and it comes back against us, we are losing the pence, okay? So fifty pence times that twelve, um fifty pence divided, um sorry, that twelve pounds we are risking on every trade divided by the fifty pence will give us zero point twenty four pence. Okay? We are dealing with money right now. Is it clear to everyone to this point, please?
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah.
Great, great. I want to hear more, yeah, so that I can see that we are getting on the same page, because I don't want to be forward than a- anyone, yeah? We need to be on the same stage or the same page, okay?
Yeah, yeah.
Good, good. So right now, we know that before we can lose twelve pounds, we have to lose twenty four pence in every pip towards our fifty pence stop loss. Then, this is the question that comes. What is the lot size? Lot size to be used? So guys, tell me, what is the appropriate lot size to be used for this?
Zero point zero two.
Zero point zero two. I love, that is, zero point what? Zero point zero two, yeah? That what you said, please? Good. Any, any, uh, any other answer, please? No one is wrong here. We are just learning, so please bring more answer if you want, if you need um, if you have any answer in mind.
No, I'm going with that, since you can't put twenty four p on.
Alright, cool. Who else, please? Okay, so, so we are all going with zero point zero two, right?
Yeah.
Great. And the answer is zero point zero two. Remember that we started the lot size over here. Remember that we said zero point zero one is a ten pence or a ten cent. Then if we are going to raise zero point twenty four, then how much would that be? That is zero point zero two. Is it clear to this stage, please?
Yes.
So right now, we know that the risk management that we are using is proper risk management over here, which leads to knowing our lot size to be used. What you should remember about trading is this. Trading, as my mentor Augustine always say to me, the market is not your friend, so you shouldn't be a friend to the market. And what you should know is, this whole market is like a game, and this game, how to play it is how to survive in it. The whole thing is to be able to remain in it and keep going. Many people have been complaining, oh, shift is not working, it's not, it's not, that is not working. It's working totally hundred percent. Why is not working for us? It's because we are using our own risk management, which is above our limit. Now, let's see here. Usually, shift give us this. Shift give us this risk management. It says that if you have a thousand as balance, you should use zero point zero one. Am I right or wrong? Tell me. Guys, have anyone in shift, have anyone come across this? If you have, say yes, please.
Yes, yes.
Good. How many of us have been following this? Me, to be fair, I haven't.
No.
I have. Trust me, I have it. But I noticed that the whole principle, the whole game for this is how to remain in the game. Oh, where is my thing? Okay. The whole principle is how to be in the game, not how to lost in the game. You have to be in the game to win, okay? Alright, so we are still, we are still on risk management, risk management. Does anyone have any question? Before we continue, we do more examples, so that we can know how to calculate for our risk management. Any question, please?
No questions, thank you.
Great, great. Okay, so right now, how many, how much do you want me to use for the balance? Let's get more examples. Let's get more examples, so that we can know how to calculate for this risk management and the lot size we are using. Okay, balance. Give me, give me a realistic balance, please. How much?
About a hundred or two hundred.
Okay, hundred pounds or hundred dollars, yeah? Cool. Now, always, what you need to ask yourself before you put in any lot size is the risk percentage. How many or how much am I willing to risk? We always say two percent. Am I right or wrong?
Yeah, yeah.
And two percent of hundred pounds is how much? Guys, tell me.
Two dollars.
How much?
Two dollars.
Dollars.
Two dollars. Good, good. So that means in every trade, we take, we are risking only two dollars. Am I right or wrong?
Yeah.
Correct.
Two dollars or two pounds. Okay, guys, great. Now, you ask yourself, okay, if I'm risking two dollars, what is the stop loss that I, I will use? Let's say fifty pence as shift will give us. It doesn't mean that every time it's fifty pence stop loss. Yeah, you can, after this, you do something different. Maybe you, you do your own um analysis and you know that um the stop loss you are going to use is twenty, twenty stop loss, um twenty pence stop loss, that to recalculate it and see how you can use the um lot size as well. Alright. Okay, good. Now, we have our stop loss, we have our risk. So what we need to do is divide the amount we got from risking over the top loss. So we are risking two pounds every pit, uh every trade we take. That divided by the fifty pence stop loss, how much is left?
Four cent.
Four cent.
It was zero point zero four.
Good. Now, how much do you think you have to put for your lot size?
Less than zero point zero one, if possible.
Hundred percent? Hundred percent. So who has been using more than the risk management? Me, I have.
Every time.
And I blew my account. Trust me, I blew my account. Who have done that before?
Yep.
Yeah, because I have the, as of um hundred pounds and I'll be using a lot size of zero point ten, which is obviously one pip is what? Is um one pound, yeah? So if it goes against me like hundred tips, that means I'm gone, more from the market. And remember, the game is for you to remain in the game and keep on doing it. Because if you get back to your trades, you can see that you are winning more, you are losing less. But how come that your account is not growing? This is because you are using a risk management, which is not proportional to your balance. You can see that the losses that you have had is not, uh, it's not like you, you always have losses, losses, losses upon losses. No, it's just only one or two losses that will make your balance go like fairly dead, but you are winning more. Have that happened to you? Am I talking to someone? Have that happened to anyone?
To me.
Yeah. Let's, let's say if we are using proper lot size right now, like zero point zero one, how many times can we blow our account if we are using like zero point zero one on a hundred, on a hundred pounds or a hundred dollars? Anyone?
Hardly.
Hardly? Hundred percent. I, I, I think if we say though, like ten pence, hundred, yeah, let's say hundred divided by ten pence, how much would that be? Um, sorry, it's hundred. So I, I mean hundred, hundred times um ten pence, that's what I meant. Hundred pounds times.
One.
That is ten times. So if you are, you are blowing your account ten times using this lot size, yeah, you can blow your account, but listen, no one will continually lose ten times continually like that. I think uh if you are doing that continuously, that means you are doing something which is not really being taught. You are doing your own stuff. Okay, guys? Are we on the same page, please?
Yes, yes.
Yep.
So everyone knows how to calculate the lot using the balance and using the risk percent as well as the stop loss, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, let's get this one. Let's say we have, we have thousand pounds, yeah? Now, let's move to the big, big big values, yeah? We have thousand pounds. We are risking two percent of it. How much? How much would that be? Tell me, guys, tell me.
Twenty dollars.
Twenty, twenty.
The twenty, so that means in every trade we take, we want to lose only twenty dollars, okay? Let's say our stop loss is no more fifty, it's just thirty. Eighty stop loss. That means when it goes against us, every pip will be, or how much? We don't know, but we have to make sure that we are losing only twenty pounds, okay? That means twenty pounds which we are losing in every trade divided by divided by our thirty pips stop loss. Which will give us how much? Fast, fast guys. Would you give us how much, please? Anyone?
Zero point six six.
Zero point six six, good. Zero point six six, so we can run it and give um be like zero point seven. Am I right? So, zero point seven is the amount that we are okay? That is seventy pence. Per pip. Are you with me?
Yes, yes.
Great. Now, how many lot size do we have to put in? We know every pip is zero, um is seventy pence, so how much lot size do we have to put in? Tell me, guys.
Zero point zero seven.
Zero point zero seven. Is anyone lost, please? Is anyone lost? No one is lost? Great. So that is it for today. We know our risk management, risk management, I've keep it simple and straightforward. Now you know that you are using your balance, your percentage for risk and your stop loss to calculate the lot size you're using. Am I right?
Yes.
Great. I'm done. Thank you, guys. This is it. It's just a brief. If you have any question, let me know. We go over it again for you to really understand it and use proper risk management, because the whole game is to keep you in the game, to keep you going, it's not about you putting in anything you want, otherwise you blow your account over and over again. But if you keep on doing what you were doing and you keep on being in the game, trust me, as we say, compounding will be easy for you and you will really be succeeding in trading. Thank you, guys. Any question for me?
Hello, hi, I have a question.
Yeah.
So say with this one thousand dollar um pound, right? So we are putting on a trade and then you put your lot size is zero point zero seven. That is assuming only one trade at a time, you kind of multiple more than one.
Yeah. Yeah, that, or the only one trade for the day.
For the day or, or at a time?
For the day. If you want to put in like three trades and we know that you are risking two percent of your balance and you are doing two trades, that means you divide your zero point zero seven by two. Then you split it into two. Be- because you have to really keep in mind that we are risking only twenty pounds or twenty dollars of our balance, which is a um hundred hundred K, um which is one K, sorry, alright?
Okay, so one trade going. Same given with that amount.
Yeah, that, that's why Mr. Nathan normally say only one trade can make you profitable in the market, only one currency pair. If you must that one currency pair, you, you were done.
Okay.
Yeah, but if shift gives you more trades and you really want to put in more, that's why shift will give you zero point zero one. It give you zero point zero one, zero point zero one. Because they know that, I don't know whether they know that you put in many trades, but to protect your balance, you use zero point zero one and you get what you want. You'll never blow your account.
Okay, so if you are working on the concept of ten percent per day, that's zero point zero one should be able to give you the ten percent on a thousand.
It depends on the pips you are targeting as well. You get me? Yeah, it depends on your take profit, that the target you are really targeting, because some- sometimes you can say, oh, alright, I'm taking only twenty pips in profit. I don't know whether I, if that would be up to your ten percent in the market. So it depends on what you mean by um getting your ten percent associated with your take profit.
Okay, that's fine, yeah.
Good.
And then if you increase, obviously increase your balance to two thousand, you can then have a lot size of zero point fourteen?
Okay, let's do two thousand.
Yeah.
So let's say the balance is two thousand. Great. And we know we are risking how much? Two percent? But two percent of two thousand, how much would that be?
Forty.
Forty?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah, forty, yeah?
Yes.
Good. I thought you were going to change it. Anyways, yeah, we gave forty. Good. Forty dollars or forty pounds? Good. Now, how much will your stop loss be? Tell me. How much do you want your stop loss to be? Is it fifty or twenty or thirty?
I think twenty pips.
Okay, so we are using this stop loss, we should know that in the day, our trade we are taking, we want to lose only forty pounds or forty dollars.
Yeah.
Therefore, our forty dollars divided by our twenty stop loss, twenty pip stop loss, which will give us how much? Would you give us two? Am I right?
Yes.
That pounds or two dollars. Am I right?
Yeah, yeah, you're right.
Right.
Good. Now, if it's two dollars or two pounds, how much do you think the lot size will be?
Zero point two.
Zero point two. Anyone have any uh answer? Zero point two. We all agree it's zero point two, right?
Yeah.
Good. Now, we know that we are using zero point two for a lot size for a trade in the day. Let's say, obviously, we want to take ten trades in that day, but we, we, we all know that maximum trade that you should take five, five trades a day. Am I right? Or no one have heard it? Have anyone heard that you can take only five trades in a day?
No.
Oh, okay. So, I think Mr. Mr. Nathan used to say it, used to say it, because you can't be going here and there in the market like you are chasing the money. But if you have a solid five trades, it can make your day. A solid five trades. So even we, if we are using five trades in a day and we know that all the trades, we are losing only two pounds. And we are losing forty pounds, sorry, all the trades, we are losing forty pounds. So how much do you think our lot size will be? Tell me, anyone have idea?
It was stupid, zero point two?
No. It won't.
Zero point zero four.
Zero point two five.
Okay. Okay, so it says zero point two. One says zero point, let me. Oh, sorry. Come on. Okay, so we got zero point two, zero point zero four, yeah? And zero point four. What was the last one, please?
I go by zero point zero four.
You go by zero point zero four, okay?
Yeah.
Okay, cool.
That is one over twenty four, one over twenty five.
Oh, alright. Eh eh any, any more um answer, please? Any more answer before we, we get into it? No, okay, cool. Let's do this. So we know that in one trade, if you are taking only one trade, you are using zero point two, which is two pounds per, per pip, alright? So if you are u- using five trades, therefore, the zero point two divided by that five,
Yeah.
which will give us zero point zero four. So we are using zero point zero four, meaning that in every pip in those five trades is forty pence. Is everyone with me, please?
Yeah, yeah.
Great. Is your question answered, please? Hope in everyone is taking notes, because this is your lifetime risk management, which will really be beneficial to you and me.
Uh we, we can also use the shift calculator. It basically does uh all the calculation uh automatically in case like we don't wanna do all of that. So it also has it in.
Yeah, hundred percent, you're, that, that's true. If you don't want to go through this struggle, you just do the calculations on the shift um calculator and you are done. Alright, guys? Hope everyone is clear with this, please.
Yes, yes, thank you, appreciate it.
Yeah, that's good, thank you.
It's good to know right now, so it's clear.
Great, great. So we know right now that our balance and our percent help us to get um our stop loss as well. Hope everyone is writing it down as well, please, it's for stop loss will actually give the lot size to use. And the formula for that eh our balance times the risk percent will give us the amount to risk per trade. Or the amount to risk on the trip, then we do. And the lot size, the lot size to be used equals the amount that got, or the amount that we got for um risking on the trade divided by the stop loss. Is it clear, please?
Yes, it is, thank you.
Yep.
Great. So I'm done for, that is for our risk management. Any question, please? Great.
Now, here, thank you so much.
Thank you too. Thank you all for being on the risk management uh calculation lesson for today. And I hope everyone will use proper risk management and keep on doing what you're doing, keep on learning and never give up. Consistency is the game. Consistency, I repeat, consistency. Learn, always I say this. If you remove the L from the learn, it's N, so you learn to N. If you don't learn, you never end. Thank you, guys, for being this uh lesson. Thank you very much. Have a nice day. And we will continue next week. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you.
Well done, well done, well done.